Go ahead and call the Stanley County Board of Commissioners regular meeting February 5th to order. And I ask that Commissioner Lahon, if you would, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation.
Would take a minute and bow with me, please. Father, we come to you thankful for this another day of life, the many blessings that we have, the many blessings that our county has. We thank you for the associates that work with the county and the things they do. I know we're honoring a couple tonight for retirement and we pray that your blessings would be upon them and their families. Protect our service people as they protect us. And God bless the USA. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united in all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Lahon. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? What is the pleasure of the board?
Move.
Commissioner Eferd.
I approve, sir.
Got a motion from Commissioner Eferd, second from Vice Chairman McIntyre. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item one, introduction of the new Health and Human Services Director. And presenter is Andy Lucas, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. It's my pleasure this evening to recognize our new Health and Human Services Director, Mr. David Jenkins. David is here this evening and may come up and just say a brief few words. But David comes to us from Carteret County out east and was there for three years, give or take a few months as their health director and assistant human services director. And prior to that, he was health director in Scotland County, east of here, in Laurinburg, North Carolina. Prior to that, he actually worked in New Hanover County and worked in environmental health. And so he sort of cut his teeth in the environmental health area of health and then sort of broadened out from there when he became director. And so it's a pleasure to have David and all this experience here, both from the health side and with our new consolidation of Health and Human Services. The fact that he was an assistant human services director in Carteret is very, very valuable. He understands both sides of that and sort of the goal of another county that's already been through it. So David, welcome. Appreciate you being here this evening and you're free to say a few words if you'd like.
Is this the correct?
That's the radio.
This is the one I want to talk in on. Very good. Well, I just want to say, me and my family are real excited. We did move here. I've got two young kids. We're real excited about being here in Stanley County, being part of the community here. Looking forward to working with the Health Department and the DSS Department, staff, county administration, and our community partners to make some good things happen in the community. So thank you so much and really appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Welcome to Stanley County. All right. Item two, retirement award presentations. And I'm going to let Vice Chairman McIntyre, if you will, handle one, just so I don't get winded. We'll take care of it here and then we'll go down to the front.
I'd like to read a little bit about Ms. Teresa. Let me look at my notes here. Teresa Sides from the Stanley County Health Department. Teresa began working for the Stanley County Health Department on February 2nd, 1998 as the Child Health Secretary and as this time is the Clinical Services Management Support Supervisor. Her key aspects of her work include supervision of clerical staff and management of daily office functions. Teresa is married to Tim Sides. They have one son, Dustin, and one daughter, Candace. She has two grandchildren, Jeff and Maxson. She's very family oriented and plans to spend more time with family. Congratulations on that, especially her grandchildren. Teresa is to be commended on her 20 years of service in the Health Department. She has been a loyal employee who took pride in her work and we greatly missed. We wish her a long, happy, healthy, and restful retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. I've got one here for our 911 Communications Employee, David Lamar Vassar, known affectionately to his friends as Brother Dave. Began his public safety career as a telecommunicator on December 13th, 1993. This was the beginning of the consolidated E-911 Communications Center in Stanley County. His Brother Dave moniker came from more than 30 years of radio broadcasting. Brother Dave is known for his trademark voice, which has served him well through both his career in public radio broadcasting and through public safety as a telecommunicator. Even as he retires, his trademark voice carries on in the voice programming of fire department radios. Each time a radio is changed to a different talk group, Brother Dave's voice is there to announce it. After a little over 24 years as a telecommunicator, Brother Dave's retirement will take with him experience and knowledge that one can only attain from many years of dedication and learning. We hope that some of the knowledge that he shared through training has been embedded in those who learned under his tutelage. In his retirement, Brother Dave will be spending time with his fiancee, very soon to be wife Barbara, his son Jacob, and enjoying his music and old television shows. Watch out, world, as there will probably be lots of travel in there as well. Though he may retire from 911 Department, he cannot retire from his 911 family. And just like a bad penny, they keep showing up. Congratulations, Brother Dave. Ms. Sides and Brother Dave, if you will, join us down front.
You gonna put Tim to work?
Yes.
I hear ya. I'm good. Tim, you in trouble, son.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Good luck.
I want to thank y'all for y'all's service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all would, I think, look up the light and get their picture taken with you. Y'all want one of you. And here we're listening.
I'll bring it up.
You gotta get some.
We got one beauty. No, two beauties. Why not mess up?
You fixing to get in trouble there, Commissioner.
All right, Rose, you're up.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We made sure these clocks didn't have any alarms on them.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. That's certainly something I look forward to doing one day. All right. Item three, proclamation declaring February 5th through 11th, 2018 is National FBLA-PBL Week. Presenters Monica Chang, Vice President, Stanley Community College, PBLA. Katrina Sams, State PBL President.
Throughout the country, February 5th through the 13th, colleges and high schools are celebrating National Future Business Leaders of America Phi Beta Lambda Week. I am Monica Chang, Vice President of the Stanley Community College PBL Chapter. And we're excited to be promoting the advantages of PBL membership on our campus. With me from SEC Tonight are Sarah, Leric, Giselle, Mr. Dan Hazlett, and Ms. Dana Cheney.
And I'm Katrina Sams. Although now a student at Western Carolina University, I was a member of the Stanley Community College Chapter when I was elected as President of Phi Beta Lambda for state president last spring.
I'm Bailey Queen from West Stanley High School, FBLA Chapter, where we're busy promoting the FBLA goals during this week, too.
FBLA Phi Beta Lambda is a national organization for college students in business and business-related curriculums and majors.
The Stanley Community College Chapter is proud to have been one of the 26 Diamond Chapters across the country as FBLA-PBL celebrated its 75th anniversary as national organization this year.
With Clay Gill as President, the Pfeiffer University Chapter is one of the state's five largest groups this year.
All three chapters attended the 75th Anniversary National Leadership Conference last June in Anaheim, California.
And we're all looking forward to our state leadership conferences for FBLA next month in Greensboro and for PBL April in Charlotte.
With the goal of attending the 2018 National Leadership Conference this June in Baltimore, Maryland.
The national theme for PBL this year is Elevate Your Future. And our chapters are working really hard to make this idea a reality for our members.
To go with that theme, I'm excited that the keynote speaker for our state PBL conference is Ms. Cherry Berry, North Carolina Commissioner of Labor, recognized by everyone as the person whose signature and picture verifies the safety of every elevator in the state.
Throughout this week, we are celebrating various promotions, including Community Service Day, Career Awareness Day, and Advisor Appreciation Day on Wednesday.
For West Stanley High School, the advisor is Mr. John Thompson.
For Pfeiffer, the advisors are Dr. Christopher Howard and Dr. Anna Smith.
For Stanley, our advisors are Ms. Merlin Amr Tharaj, Ms. Timmy McElwain, Ms. Danny Cheney, and Mr. Dan Hazlett.
Our advisors agree that PBL is a good way to teach and provide the skills that will make us the business, educational, civic, and government leaders of tomorrow.
We also participate in the National Business Person of the Year Program. And the Stanley Chapter was pleased that its nominee, Ms. Tracy Hayes with Edward Jones Company, was named the 2017 State Business Person of the Year.
Among the many projects on our agenda is raising funds for March of Dimes. The Future Business Leaders of America Phi Beta Lambda Incorporated is one of the top five nonprofit contributors in the country to March of Dimes.
As we continue promoting education and business, as well as making our members more aware of the American enterprise system, we appreciate the county commissioners and other civic and government groups that are building the business foundation of Stanley County. We thank you, too, for recognizing National PBL Week by signing this proclamation.
We will display it proudly this week as we continue our activities.
Thank you again for your interest in Future Business Leaders of America and Phi Beta Lambda and making the National PBL Week official here in Stanley County. Thank you.
Thank you. Would one of you guys like to read the proclamation?
Proclamation. National FBLA-PBL Week, February 5th through the 11th, 2018, for Future Business Leaders of America Phi Beta Lambda. Whereas Phi Beta Lambda and Future Business Leaders of America develop competent, aggressive business leadership; whereas PBL and FBLA strengthen the confidence of students and themselves and their work; whereas PBL and FBLA encourage members in the development of individual projects which contribute to the improvement of home, business, and community; whereas PBL and FBLA develop character, prepare students for useful citizenship, and foster patriotism; whereas PBL and FBLA encourage efficient money management; whereas PBL and FBLA encourage scholarship and promote school loyalty; whereas PBL and FBLA assist students in the establishment of occupational goals; whereas PBL and FBLA facilitate the transition from school to work. Be it resolved that Stanley County, North Carolina, participate in the national designation of Phi Beta Lambda Future Business Leaders of America Week. In doing so, the commissioners applaud the aforementioned goals and recognize the continued contributions and successes of the FBLA Chapter at West Stanley High School and the Phi Beta Lambda Chapters at Stanley Community College and Pfeiffer University. Particular recognition is given to Katrina Sams, a spring graduate of Stanley Community College and now a student at Western Carolina University for being elected as a State PBL President for this year. The commissioners applaud the chapters on their awards at the 2017 State PBL Competitions, followed by awards at the 75th Anniversary National Conference last summer in Anaheim, California. The commissioners also wish all current members success as they prepare for participation in their 2018 leadership conferences and competitive events. These chapters have conducted programs and projects that have highlighted and have brought recognition to their respective campuses and Stanley County. Most importantly, they have provided the opportunity for leadership development that has resulted in outstanding citizens and business leaders. The commissioners congratulate Phi Beta Lambda and Future Business Leaders of America and are pleased to salute them publicly during this week of national emphasis.
Thank you. And we've got a signed copy of this proclamation, if you guys would like to get a copy of it. I believe everyone has signed it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chairman.
I'd like to make a comment and then I will make a motion to approve this proclamation. I have been involved with Stanley Community College PBL in the past. My wife was an advisor there. And I spent lots of times at state contests doing some judging years ago. So I know what you go through. And you always, all of your chapters always bring a recognition to Stanley County. And for that, we appreciate you very much. And I make a motion that we approve this proclamation.
Second. Got a motion from Vice Chairman McIntyre and a second from Commissioner Swain. And I believe we've all signed it, so. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and you have a signed copy. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Swain.
Just a quick point. I would like to ask to excuse the county manager a minute. I asked him to make a copy of that, so each of you guys could take one back to your respective chapters.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll recess for a couple minutes here. Thank you, Mr. Manager. All right. Next up, item four, Tax Administration. You're up, Clinton. Clinton Swearingen, Tax Administrator.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Glad to be with you tonight. According to General Statute 105, 396A, the tax collector must report to the governing body the total amount of unpaid taxes for the current fiscal year that are liens on real property. Upon receipt of the report, the governing body must order the tax collector to advertise these tax liens. As of January 30th of this year, the total amount of unpaid county real property taxes for the current fiscal year, which is 1718, that are liens on real property amount to $1,925,153.90. Upon order by the Board of Commissioners, these tax liens will be advertised in March of 2018. The stated amount will be reduced as collections office continues to accept payments. Delinquent notices actually were mailed Friday and have hit the mailboxes today. Believe me, I know it. Had several calls today. I've attached the report for your viewing showing what is owed Stanley County. It also shows what's still owed each fire district and the municipalities. As a point of reference, last year, when I appeared before you in February of 2017, the number was $1,990,095.42. So we're almost $65,000 to the good from where we were last year this time. I feel like that is very, very good and very important because not only are we collecting more, but because this was a revaluation year, we've got about $1 million more levy than we had last year, too. So we've collected more money and we've reduced it. So every year, this number has come down. Last year was the first year it's been under $2 million since I've become administrator. But going all the way back to February of 2014, it was almost $2.3 million. So each year, we're progressively getting better from that timeframe going forward. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. But I request the board issue an order to advertise these tax liens in the month of March.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lahon.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion from Commissioner Lahon, a second from Vice Chairman McIntyre. Any discussion from the board? See none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? See none. Motion carries.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Clinton. Next up, Cooperative Extension, Approval of Enhanced Voluntary Ag District Applications. Ms. Lori Ivy. Evening, Lori.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and staff. On behalf of the voluntary ag district, I'm here tonight to present to you three applications for consideration for approval. Those applications are William B. Linker and Velvet W. Linker, Phil Burlison and Reba H. Burlison, Laney Burlison, and Constance E. Burlison. The applications, along with the parcel number and the maps, are included in your packets. The enhanced voluntary ag district is the agreement that they have their property in enhanced for a 10-year period that's renewal at the end of the 10 years. Questions?
Any questions for Ms. Ivy?
This does come as a recommendation from the voluntary ag district board.
What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Eferd.
I make a motion we approve the enhanced voluntary ag applications as presented.
Got a motion for approval as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Morgan. Any further discussion? Hear none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear none. Motion carries. Seven to zero. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Per session law, 201735, the bylaws that are adopted by the EDC must be approved by the Board of County Commissioners. So in your packet, you have the bylaws that were... The action was taken on by the EDC Board to approve on the 22nd day of January. Be more than happy to answer any questions that I may be able to ask or answer.
Does anyone on the board have any questions? For county manager, Andy Lucas? See none. What is the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I move to approve the two bylaws.
Motion from Commissioner Lahon to approve, second by Commissioner Swain. Did I get that? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear none. Motion carries. Seven to zero. Item seven, Resolution of Support for HB 551, SB 595, Marcy's Law. And that is my item. I was asked by folks who are working on this if we would put this before the board for your consideration and approval. I believe this passed the North Carolina House of Representatives, like 110 to 7 or something. It was a pretty significant margin and something they got a fairly nationwide campaign, I think, trying to get this passed in several different states. So any questions, concerns from any of the board members?
Mr. Chairman, as I read this, I think there's one correction to be made. If you look on the fourth "whereas" third line, it says appropriates restitution and the right to speak at during... Could leave the word "at," "out." It doesn't look like that, nor... Give them the right to speak during criminal proceedings. I don't think they need the word "at." If I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
I believe that sounds correct to me. County manager shaking his head yes as well.
In that case, I make a motion to approve the resolution and our support for HB 551, SB 595, Marcy's Law.
Got a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Do I have a second? Got a second from Commissioner Morgan. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Hear none. Motion carries. Seven to zero. Thank you, Commissioners, for your support. I will get a signed copy of that to the folks who asked me to put this on our agenda. Next is the consent agenda. I'm sure everyone's had time to look over it. It's fairly lengthy, but several budget amendments in there. What is the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I move to approve as presented.
Vice Chairman McIntyre, motion to approve as presented. Second from Commissioner Lahon. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Seven to zero. All right. And now, public comment. Motion by the public left, I think. I don't have anyone who has signed up. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Please come forward. See none. Board comments, announcements, and committee reports. Start down this way. Commissioner Lauder. Commissioner Eferd.
I have one, Mr. Chairman. This board approved a feasibility study through the COG for the senior services. Those feasibility study will have two town hall meetings or survey meetings. They will be February 20th. They will be in locusts at the Joel Honeycutt Room from 9:00 till 11:00. And then that same day, from 2:00 till 4:00, they will be in Norwood. And I believe that is at the community room. So I wish everyone would get out and support that. Surveys, and they'll have maps and all, and they'll even have light refreshments. So if you guys want to attend. So just want to make everyone aware of that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Eferd. Commissioner Swain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one quick update from RPO. The DOT has posted through Dana... go out to the Agri Civic Center on February the 18th and hear some real fine music by the US Air Force Band. 3 o'clock. It's free.
3 o'clock on Sunday, the 18th.
Sunday. It's free, Scott. And I'll buy you a way in if you need me to.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawhan.
Vice Chairman McIntyre?
No comments.
Thank you. All right. I've got a thank you, thank you note here from Mary Troutman. We had the privilege tonight for two retirement presentations, but I believe at our last meeting or the one before, we had the retirement presentation for Ms. Troutman. But County Manager and Commissioners, thank you for the clock and recognition of my retirement. In some ways, 30 years seems like a long time, in others, like yesterday. The Senior Center was only a little over a year old when I started. I've seen the Department form and services expanded and improve to the Senior Center of Excellence we have today. You have a senior services department to rival any in the state, and I hope that you will continue to give it your full support in the years to come. It's the right thing to do, and remember, we seniors folk, thanks again. Mary Troutman, with a nice smiley face. So, thank you, Ms. Troutman, if you're listening, for the nice, nice card. My committee, Water and Sewer Authority, we met earlier this evening to go over some financials and the status of the Water and Sewer Authority, and things are slowly, but surely, I think, are continuing to improve with the financials there and trying to get that in a little better shape. Hopefully, later this year, we'll be able to start considering a additional phase for the Water and Sewer Authority to look at starting, so it's about 20 to 25 miles of water lines in the eastern part of the county. So, hopefully soon, we will be able to take a look at that and get that project going. Thank you, Commissioner Morgan, for your words earlier. It's tough to lose a young one so, so small, but I, too, want to support the fourth grade graders at East Elementary, so thank you for that earlier. And that's all the comments I've got. We've got a closed session. Item to discuss economic development in accordance with General Statute 143, 318 dot 11A4, a personnel issue in accordance with General Statute 143, 318 dot 11A6, and to consult with the county attorney in accordance with General Statute 143, 318 dot 11A3. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Efer.
I make a motion.
Got a motion from Commissioner Efer, second from Vice Chairman McIntyre. All those in favor, please say aye. And we will be in the County Manager's Conference Room.